Thank you for joining us. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's April 24th, 6:00 PM. Oconee County Council. We'll begin as usual with the public comments session. Terri Swain.
Hello, I'm Terri Swain from Fair Oaks Youth Center. We have leased the Oakway property from the county for 20 years and for the purpose of providing recreation for kids in our area. Fair Oaks Recreation is proposing a resolution that its recreation boundaries be the same as the school district boundaries for Fair Oaks Elementary. We feel this resolution is necessary so that we are able to establish a permanent boundary of our own for the future growth of Fair Oaks Youth Center. Thank you.
Ms. Jennings?
Good evening, Council. I'm Jean Jennings. Tonight, I'm going to be speaking about a meeting that I had with Mr. Davis. I met with Mr. Davis on March 12th, 2018, with Ms. Katie Smith, the council...
Clerk.
That works for the council, taking notes. And Mr. Davis had asked me about having a meeting with him, and I agreed. A copy of the meeting notes was given to me by Ms. Smith at one of the council meetings, and I looked at those and I realized there were some differences in what was on here and what I had on my notes. And I wanted to bring those to your attention. On the notes taken from the meeting, she, meaning me, advised she was coming here under the Freedom of Speech Act. What I said was, "I'm coming here today to the meeting with you about Article One listed in the Constitution of the United States under the Freedom of Speech." And then the next one was, was me noted where she worked and the vacations she took. I did mention some jobs I had working as Executive Secretary with the Red Cross when Desert Storm and Hurricane Hugo was, had happened, working with the county, also working as a secretary for Foothills Assisted Living Facility, 10 years. I also mentioned some vacations that I had had with, with different people. I mentioned former President Jimmy Carter and his wife Rosalyn, also met Jerry Orbaugh from Law &amp; Order, had been to Price is Right, Millionaire Show, and other places. I was just giving some background information. I wasn't trying to impress them or anyone else. I was making them aware that I didn't fall off of a turnip truck, and I do like to travel and have fun. And notes taken from the meeting that I had met with Tony Adams at the Quilt Trail Open House on February the 9th, 2018. I said, "I met with Mr. Adams at the Quilt Trail Open House," and he explained the situation there. I told Mr. Davis and Ms. Smith it helped me to better understand the situation, but that I will continue to speak when I feel it necessary. Mr. Davis thanked me for going to Oakway and seeing the project. Several times in the meeting, I asked Ms. Smith if I was going to fast speak, and she said no. Notes taken from the meeting, me noted, "She comes on strong because of this sometimes to be the only way she can get Mr. Davis's attention." What I said, "He should stop and listen before he talks," and I told him, "I guess this could apply to me sometimes as well." Mr. Davis stated he wasn't offended by comments, only feels that I needed additional information before I speak, and invited me to speak at any time. Again, I told him, "He should stop and listen before he talks." He stated he will work on that. Notes from the meeting, back off, and me, back off and let council and staff do their job. Mr. Davis stated, "Council can do whatever they wish, when they want." He also stated he felt he has good communications with members and appropriate communication with staff. And then notes from the meeting, "How can you have a business and be on county council?" What, what I said at the meeting, I asked him, "How did he find time to have a business and do so much time to meeting, being involved in different organizations and being on county council?" He, he advised, Davis advised, "It is, of course, difficult to balance all of these as well as being a husband and father." He stated he loves this country, this county and the people that live in here. I told him, "I love my county, too. I'm, I was a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother, and I will continue to watch, attend meetings, and speak when I feel it necessary." This was left out of the notes that was given to me. Notes from the meeting, asked for figures regarding Oakway School. Amanda Brock provided documents toward the end of the meeting. It was not what I had asked for. This is just my comment. This was not on the notes. Notes from the meeting, me, asked why Mr. Davis went to the annexation of Clemson meeting and let Paul Kane handle it. What I asked, why Mr. Davis and Mr. Kane went to the meeting, not other council members. And Mr. Davis stated that the developer invited him to that meeting. He also stated he would do everything in his power to keep annexation from occurring. That wasn't what I asked him. That, that's my comment. It's not in the notes.
Ms. Jennings, the time is kind of up. Do we need to fix those notes? Does Katie need to fix that? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm sorry?
I said that your time is almost up, so I need to figure out what...
Okay, I've got three more things.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. And notes from the meeting, I asked why Mr. Davis went, met with Mr., with the governor. My comment was, well, he stated that it was a great opportunity that he and Mr. Kane got to share the meeting with the Pickens County. They should, they shared several great things about Oconee and told the governor that we should use his help in our area. My comment, which was not in the notes, these notes, "When the governor comes to Oconee County, then whole council could meet with him about county business." And then, this is a last, "Notes from the meeting, leave recreation alone." This is what I said. In his reply, "If we leave the recreation of the, to the city's budget, they won't be able to fund it, so I am all for supporting our kids and keeping their, these opportunities going."
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Jennings, before you sit down, Ms. Jennings, before you sit down, can I ask you a question?
All right.
Can I ask you a question, please? Do you want Ms. Smith to fix the notes so that they match what you?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, all right. That's what I was trying to get at.
Ms. Kamic, I can speak on that real quick, or you want me to? I'll do it.
Can we wait?
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Kim Alexander.
Good evening, Council. I am Kim Alexander, and I am here on behalf of Agriculture in Oconee County. And I would first like to start by thanking you guys for what you've done so far to get the Farm Center board, the land, and the opportunity to host what is getting ready to happen this weekend, and that is the South Carolina High School Championship Rodeo. In Oconee County, we have a lot of things that have been going on that are positive. Farming has been in Oconee County since it was started 150 years ago. And whether or not you guys realize it, you have 23 century farms that are still being operated in this county today, out of 500 that have been noted across the state, and 360 which are still active. Oconee County has the second highest number of family farms still being operated in the state, only second to Anderson that has 58, and Oconee County has 23. And I think that is a great thing to be proud of in Oconee County, and that's part to do with council, giving this Farm Center the recognition they need to be able to operate. Less than six months from the time the lease was signed and completed, April the 28th, they will host the South Carolina High School Rodeo Association Kids. In that association, they will have over 140 entries this year, over 40 entries of youth, that's kindergarten to first through fifth grade. Of those, they will bring with them their parents, grandparents, and a lot of family members to our county. Last year's rodeo, for the economic impact, was well over $350,000. These are huge events that this Farm Center can happen, have happened. I know that we cannot compete on a national level like some areas can. Sweetwater Events Center, if you want to look it up on the Internet, in Rock Springs, Wyoming, in 2012 bid on the National High School Rodeo Finals. And literally, what you see being built at Hartwell Village, I came by it today, was what was built in Rock Springs, Wyoming, just to host the National High School Rodeo Finals. 1,700-plus contestants for over two weeks, and that economic impact is huge. They voted to go back to Rock Springs this summer, and hopefully, some of those students that you see competing this weekend will be in Rock Springs. South Carolina may be a small team. They sent 25 to Gillette, Wyoming, last year, five graduated. Two of the five that graduated last year finished in the top 20. One of those was from Oconee County, the highest boy has ever finished in the cow-cutting event in South Carolina. The first short go was 16th. We also have, coming to this rodeo, five world champion, top 20 qualifiers. That means they finished in the top 20 in their event, and they represent your state of South Carolina. Also, you have this month, the press release will come out probably the 1st of May, but you have, are home to the National High School Rodeo Student Athlete of the Month, and that's huge. There are only 20 of those chosen from across the United States and the 43 states that rodeo, Canada, Australia, and Mexico. And you have one of the girls chosen that will be in the running for a Professionals' Choice Scholarship. These are huge events. That's not all that the Farm Center's doing. It's not just about the rodeo. Gwen would be here tonight, but they're having a farm board meeting tonight. Okay, thank you. They will also host haydays with the Kubota tractor, and it will be sometime in early May or June, depending on the weather, and that is to do with the growth of hay and farming. There will also be an old-time Farm Days exhibit scheduled in July with draft horses and farming equipment from back in the 1800s. There are many other things that the Farm Center is working on. This is due in part to the council signing the lease for the land, and we do appreciate it. Thank you for your support of agriculture. We hope to make an economic impact on Oconee County.
Thank you. Good news. Mr. Dalen.
Good evening, Council. Recently, I mailed some information on smart meters to our county attorney, David Root, and I hope he shared that with you. Not prepared to talk about that tonight, but I'll get back to you on that at a later date. Tonight, I wanted to talk about a political disease. It's known as, it's been known as Marxism, Communism, Socialism, and it currently goes by the term progressive. And in a nutshell, progressives believe that they can improve society through government. And progressivism is a feel-good ideology that supports a controlling, centralized government, the proponents believing they know best how to spend your money and telling us what to think, say, and do. What I'm going to say next is probably going to be offensive to some, but sometimes the truth has to be spoken, and it may hurt. So here goes. Here's an example of progressive thought from Mr. Davis, and I'm referring to comments that Mr. Davis made to Jean Jennings at a previous meeting. Mr. Davis says he wants to help the children. So it's okay if government steals money from mom and dad to pay for his programs. It doesn't matter that mom and dad now have less money to spend on their own children. He knows best how to spend their money, and it makes him feel good. And if you don't agree with him, you must hate children. There was a politician from our early American history by the name of Davy Crockett. He stood against progressive thought. When Congress wanted to use taxpayer dollars to help a deserving widow, he rightly informed them that it isn't a proper function of government to support any charity or cause, deserving or not. If you want to be charitable, use your own money. We can take a lesson here from Wayne McCall. He is well-known in these parts for reaching into his wallet to fund, to fund deserving causes. The Wahala Pool and elderly victims of the property tax are some recent examples of his charity. God bless you, Wayne. Here's an example of progressive thought from Mr. Kane, who, in speaking about grant money, admonished his colleagues on the council to accept this free money, because otherwise someone else will take it. Just so you know, Mr. Kane, there is no such thing as free money. It does not grow on trees. People work hard to earn it. Government steals it and redistributes it, and then you call it free money. Progressive thought believes that reforming government through centralized economic planning would eliminate corruption. It results in the government controlling property and eliminating individual property rights. Examples are zoning, property taxes, income taxes, deficit spending, laws restricting speech, and programs like health care and welfare that interfere with the people's ability to make their own economic decisions. Free-market, limited government ideology, on the other hand, what this country was founded on limits government's authority and duties, with the main duty being the protection of property rights, in the belief that property rights are the foundation of freedom. And that, council members, is the reason for the creation of government in the first place. Many people who promote progressive policies are well-meaning. A lot of damage has been caused throughout history by people with good intentions, who don't bother to subject their ideas to reason. They act on feelings and emotion rather than facts. And so, Ms. Kamic and Mr. Hart, my question for you is, where do you stand? Thank you.
Any council member comments?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to thank Ms. Swain and her whole family, and the crew that they have, volunteers that coach the kids, and they're up against the wall now. And most, all of this is in District Five. And my granddaughter is active in the volleyball that they have. So I'd like to see that Fair Oaks gets their own boundary, and I'd like this to be the end of the problem that we've had with this. I'd like for it to be solved in the near future so we don't have this problem again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member comments?
Yeah, just to give a little clarification, and thank you, Ms. Jennings, for speaking tonight on that, and thank you for your attendance. I think if we ever have a perfect attendance award, we need to give you one. So appreciate, appreciate you always being involved in what we do. When me and Ms. Jennings met, I kind of did it off the record, and I was the one actually did the notes afterwards from memory. Actually, Ms. Smith was just there, just in case Ms. Jennings had any questions or wanted something written down on there. And several other things that, that she was actually working on didn't have anything to do with, you know, our meeting. I just did it as an informal, and I apologize for that, because that's kind of what, you had brought your notes, but I was doing as an informal, as I do a lot of my meetings. And, you know, from now, now on, I'll do a better job at keeping, keeping record, because the notes that you got on there were, you know, from my memory that I had on there. So I apologize for that, and I appreciate you coming up here and, you know, stating that. And if you'd like those corrected, just let me know. And that's kind of what we talked about on your, your notes that I could add into there. So if, if you want that to be, you know, I guess, public record or whatever, we can move forward with that next time we meet. My apologies for not doing what you wanted me to do with that meeting. So, but thank you for speaking tonight.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make a couple.
Go ahead.
Just because it's been brought up here tonight. When Mr. Davis and I met with the governor, that was something that was set up by another person. And I actually mentioned it to Mr. Hart. I'm sure you remember Mr. Hart, because it was my understanding that he was traveling down to Columbia to this conference. It's the Association of Counties. Oconee County and all other 45 counties in the state are members. And so, any, any other member of council, if they chose to attend, if they chose to spend their time to do things like that, they're, they're more than welcome to attend. From what I've seen, some council members choose not to spend their time doing things like that. So, we also met with Senator Alexander, Representative Sandofer, Representative Whitmire, and asked for their support on legislation that affects county. You know, it's difficult, it frankly is very difficult to run a business and serve on county council.
Mr. Hart was there at a different time, wasn't he?
I don't know that he attended. It's, it's difficult to, to run a business. It's difficult to spend a lot of time with your family. We all up here get paid $8,000 a year. And if you do this job right, you're probably going to spend, on average, 10 to 20 hours a week doing this job for $8,000 a year. So yes, it's very difficult. It's a sacrifice. It is public service, and it galls me that some people will attack members of this council for spending too much time in public service. But that, that's my opinion, and I'm, I'm sure I'm in the minority on that. Regarding grant funding, absolutely. I would rather Oconee County receive money that is spent, we're not up here printing money. That's money that Washington is sending out into the states, and they say, "Who wants it? We're going to spend it." Would you rather it be spent in our county? They're going to spend it somewhere. They're going to spend it in, in Oconee County, or they're going to spend it in New Mexico, or spend it in California or New York. Yes. If there's no strings attached, if it allows us to pay for a couple of, of law enforcement officers for a few years that we know we need, sure, we'll take the money. If it helps us pay for some, some waste oil collection devices from DEHEC so that people aren't dumping oil into the ground, sure, we'll take it. I, I, we'll, we'll just have to agree to disagree on those things, because I, call me a progressive, call me whatever you want. I think that it's foolish for us to not take money when someone is giving it to us. Now, I wish that Washington didn't spend money the way they do. But if, we can either choose to be beneficiaries of it, or we can take a stand and, and say, "We're not going to take any money," and we'll, that's fine. We'll, we'll find a way to pay for it another way. So that's just, we'll just have to agree to disagree on those things.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment about the smart meter issue. I did call Duke Power and spoke to them about the capabilities of the smart meters that they are currently installing in the Westminster area. They do have an opt-out agreement. If you choose not to want a smart meter, you can keep the old meter. They assured me that the smart meters aren't so smart. They can only figure out kilowatts per hour, as opposed to an average of kilowatts per day that they're calculating right now. If you've had increased usage in your home, they told me the meter cannot determine, nor can they, where the usage is coming from, whether you were using too much hot water or you were doing too much laundry. So there's, from their perspective, a lot of misinformation about the smart meters right now. But if there's anything else I need to know about it, I'll welcome anybody else's comments on those. But that's what I was told by, by, not Duke, I'm sorry. It was Blue Ridge Electric I called. Blue Ridge. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so on that note, please join me for a moment of silence.
Thank you. Mr. Root, please.
I want to thank you for this, for the life that we can live about, fellow ships that we can discuss, at times like this where we can share. I have a very special place. All come together.
Thank you.
Together, perhaps, we can reach, promote, and you. All of our interactions, our respect toward others. Slow speed, certainly slow anger.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you've all received a copy of the minutes from April 10th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mullner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll provide your brief summary of the agenda this evening, and then I do have a statement I'd like to read following that summary. Ordinance 2018-07, 09, 10, 11, all have public hearings this evening, and then third and final readings following. 07 is an agreement, ordinance that would allow an agreement with the City of Wahala to allow the sheriff to operate within the jurisdiction of Wahala in order to provide services to county-owned facilities which fall under Wahala, City of Wahala's Police Department's jurisdiction. Ordinance 09, this is an ordinance that would modify the fee with Moore Warner. As said previously, as part of this ordinance, as part of the fee agreement, historically, the fees required the property of the company to be owned by the county, and then once the fee agreement expired, the property would be conveyed back to the company. Unfortunately, this one had not occurred, so we're simplifying the fee, modifying it into an individual fee, and then putting in parameters for the conveyance of the property from the original fee that was approved many, many years ago. Number 10, this ordinance would allow for the issuance of a lease purchase agreement, in essence, financing for the heating and air conditioning replacement at the courthouse. And number 11, this particular ordinance was previously referred to as Project Crumble. This is actually J-Tech, an expansion of about $19 million. So this ordinance would allow the issuance of special source revenue credits and fee low tax agreements. One second reading this evening, 2018-12, this ordinance would actually approve the multi-county industrial and business park for the Casto development in addition to the Clemson Family Investors, more commonly known as Hartwell Village. This multi-county park would allow the capabilities to provide the incentives that have been approved by council at previous meetings. No first readings of ordinances tonight, but we do have one reading of a resolution. This resolution would identify the Seneca Rail Park, or actually create the official establishment of the Seneca Rail Park. It would also allow for the approval of covenants and restrictions to be filed in accordance with that park that will guide the future development of the industries and the park itself. No action items. We do have an approval of a Foothills Farmstead Development Plan. This is, would be a part of the lease for the Oakway School properties. If you recall, we're leasing the back half, the farm area, to the, the Foothills Farmstead Development. So this would actually approve of that development plan. And then a late addition is an approval, discussion, and consideration of a request from Fair Oaks Youth Center that council provide a letter in support of their pursuit of recreation boundaries around Fair Play. around Fair Play Elementary School. Pretty straightforward in its description. Building codes appeal board, still has a position, one at large seat open. The unfinished item, the approval of the two thousand eighteen strategic plan report. We are not trying to do things over and over again, but when we went back and listened to the recording and looked at the record during that discussion in the last meeting, we sidebared and we had a vote on another matter, but we never came back and finalized the vote to make it official on approving the strategic, strategic plan report. So, I put it back on there, asked if it would be put back on there for official approval. No new business. We do have a council committee report from Mr. McCall. Two executive session items listed on the agenda. We don't actually need number two regarding the alleged assessment property record error. So, in talking with Mr. Root, we just asked, when you vote to go into executive session, you only stated for the purposes of number one. That is your agenda. Of course, I'll have to answer any questions you may have now or when we get to those items on the agenda. During the Budget Administration Committee meeting held on April seventeenth, council and the administrator engaged in a discussion regarding the Oconee County's advertising and marketing initiatives. As part of that discussion, I made mention of our first efforts to advertise with television commercials. I made some inaccurate statements and would like to correct them officially on the record. The amount spent on the television advertisement was actually one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and not the thirty-nine hundred as I indicated. The original quote was for the thirty-nine hundred, and that was the number that had actually stuck in my head. Through the work of Ms. Brock and the company, the scope of work was reduced down to the nineteen hundred and fifty dollars. The actual total was nineteen fifty, of which nine hundred was for the production of the commercials, and the remaining one thousand fifty was for the ads to be aired multiple times over a fourteen-day period. I would also like to offer an apology for sharing my opinion regarding the quality and effectiveness of the advertisements publicly before discussing them with the company that produced and managed the scheduling. My description of the quality was unfair, and the company should have had an opportunity to hear our concerns prior to me presenting them publicly. So, I wanted to just offer that on the record after our statement that we'll include with the minutes, if that's okay with you.
I'd like to suggest that we hold back any advertisement until this apology is run in the journal.
What do you mean? Until that's reported on from the meeting?
Until the, the, the document you have there is run in the journal.
So that the record is corrected?
Oh, I mean, obviously, they'll report on the, the meeting tonight, and if they choose to, you know, include that in their, their article, then that's their.
So, you wanna, you wanna get an ad for that?
Well, Willie was inflated the number that you had i- in his article today, and I think it, it should be corrected for the people in the county to know that that was inflated. In the, the three advertisements, they turned out to make two hundred and thirty-four hits on television. Is that correct?
She had mentioned that over that fourteen-time period, there were two hundred and thirty spots. What that means in their industry, I'm not sure. I'm assuming that means there was two, the, two, the three commercials ran at two hundred and thirty different times.
That's what I took from it, too.
So, anyhow, I had the wrong number on my head and wanted to offer an opinion or apology that I should have discussed that opinion with her prior to it being pub- public.
So, what are you suggesting?
I just suggest that that statement be run to correct the, the journal for where Willie was talking about the money and, and correcting it, and, and also show that Mr. Mulder has made his apology for something that he said.
Norm, you're gonna run that comment? Mr. Mulder's apology and the corrected information?
Don't know if it'll run tomorrow, but if you'll give me a copy of it, we can run it as a letter, or we can.
Okay, why don't you s- submit it as a letter so we can correct the record? The whole thing started with me suggesting that I had received some complaints from some of our media outlets, that they were not getting their fair share. Unfortunately, the assumption you made as to who made the complaint was wrong because actually, that was not the complainant.
I never made an assumption. I don't think I even issued an assumption.
Well, but you immediately started talking about TV spots, and we know who you were talking about, and that wasn't one of the people complaining. So, we know what happens when you assume, and that's not a good thing.
I didn't make an assumption on who it was. You guys started the conversation about advertisement. I mentioned the, the different things that we had tried to do. I didn't even m- mention any kind of complaints. I was just providing you information based on what we tried to do with the television ads. As a matter of fact, there was opinions offered on those in my office by council members as well that said that they didn't like the commercials.
That's fine. I still want you to run that letter and correct the record for their sake.
I've corrected the, I have corrected the record at the same medium that I made the statements. I've done it publicly here, just like I did it publicly at the meeting last time. So, I've done my part to offer the apology and correct the information that I had presented.
And I'd like you to submit a letter to the journal, please.
I'll submit a letter.
Thank you.
Well, I, I want to, I guess, state that, you know, sometimes we have comments on any kind of advertisement that we.
You know what? No, I'm not gonna submit the letter based on your direction. If the full council would like to vote and direct me to send that letter to the journal, I'd be glad to do it.
Motion to submit the letter.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I, I think, to me, I have no idea on, I mean, to me, I didn't know anything about the TV. I mean, we've ran ads all over the United States. And I have some that, that I like and some that I don't like, but I think, you know, to me, the assumption, you know, to continually, you know, put, put salt in the wound. I mean, we've got an apology, we had a meeting moving forward to there. I, I mean, I don't know what else, you know, you want on that. And, you know, we're, you know, if we gotta run that in the paper, I mean, that's an ad cost. And here, we're talking about paying too much, but you're, you know, I mean, you're, you're not gonna take up a full page.
That cause our vendors to be defamed, we should correct those.
They're not our.
There was not, there was not even a.
They're not our vendor.
Well, that's fine. Well, obviously, they're our vendor if you purchased ads from them.
We're a customer. We are a customer of theirs.
Okay, well, we're getting into semantics.
But e- even, I mean, to run an ad there.
We're not running an ad. We asked for him to write a letter.
Madam Chairman, uh, Chairwoman, I, I, I will, if the letter comes, we will, I will accept it. I don't have the final authority on writing, on, on letters being submitted and what runs and what doesn't. I did not report on the comments that were made. So, that's really all I can speak to. I will, if I receive a letter, I don't know what the response, I, I don't have anybody to talk to right now. So, I can't guarantee anything, but if he wants to, if, if, if he submits a letter, I will submit it to whoever. But we did not report in my coverage of that meeting on those comments.
Yes, but nevertheless, they made it into today's newspaper.
That's all I can speak to.
I know, I know, I know.
But we didn't actually report on those, on those comments.
The only thing I'm asking for is just, if I'm gonna get direction, I'd prefer it be in this environment.
And that's what I'm trying to accomplish here. I'm constantly being interrupted.
I will send in a tell Willie, I will, you know, the same place that that person wrote comments in, or, you know, I'll be glad to.
Okay.
I mean, didn't we make comments on, in a full-page ad in the journal that somebody up here didn't like? I mean, we made that comment, too, and that's a vendor. I mean, you, you have a personal.
About this, your time is up. I wanna vote.
I had something to say as well.
Well, we're not discussing this anymore. Aye. Just send the letter. All right, moving on. We have three, three, one, two, three. Three to two as usual, I'm sure.
I didn't get a chance to even.
Would you like to vote?
Madam Chair, just as a point of order, to call the question, it would take a, a supermajority. And I believe you called the question, so you'd need four out of five folks to call the question to end debate.
All right, so what am I supposed to do now?
If you want to call the question, which is what you did, to say things, end in debate, you have to have a motion to call the question, and then four out of the five people vote.
Okay, well, we're not gonna have that, so do I need to let people talk? Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Paul Kane, go ahead.
So, what we're concerned is that there was an inaccurate statement of the cost that the county paid? Is that what we're concerned about?
Yes.
Which was not nineteen hundred dollars, it was thirty-nine hundred or thirty-nin-
We started with a thirty-nine hundred dollar quote, and through Ms. Brock and, and the company's work, they were able to bring the cost down by removing some of the stations and some of the ads down to the nineteen.
Gotcha.
And then I, it, it also made it appear as though the nineteen, the thirty-nine hundred I was referring to was just for the commercials. There was a nine hundred dollar production cost in there. The advertising spots were one thousand and fifty. So, we basically paid nine hundred dollars to somebody to produce the commercial that also worked for Northland that normally would produce those, but she did it and got paid on the side.
Gotcha. And so, the point of, of the letter to the newspaper, or letter to the editor, tell Willie, is to correct the amount of money?
Yes, the amount of money that was reported today is four thousand for the ads. Mm-hmm. So, I'd like it corrected to state that it was nineteen fifty with twenty, two hundred and thirty TV spots.
Two hundred and thirty.
Two hundred and thirty over the course of two weeks, was it?
It's fifteen days.
Yeah, so it's not a whole lot, it's just a couple of sentences. And it'll be fair to the person that we're just talking about. Okay, so, any other comments? Can we vote now? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, now, once again, we have one, two, three, four public hearings today. Yet no one signed up for either of them. So, we'll start with ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero seven, which is the intergovernmental agreement between Oconee County, the city of Wahala, and the sheriff.
Make a motion.
Oh, no, 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 not yet. This is supposed to be a public hearing, but no, that nobody signed up for. So, that being the case, unless somebody wants to comment right now, any written comments can be submitted to our clerk at any time. So, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that ordinance. Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero nine is the Borg Warner memorandum of understanding. And no one signed up for that public hearing. If anybody would like to comment, comment right now, you're welcome to. And otherwise, written comments can go to our clerk. Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash ten is the three hundred and sixty-five thousand equipment lease purchase for the, the courthouse. No one signed up for that either. Anybody would like to comment on that at this point in time? No? And ordinance two thousand eighteen dash eleven, which is the fee and lieu of tax agreement for J-Tech North America. No one signed up for that either. Anybody wanna comment right now is welcome to. Written comments to the clerk. I'm closing out the public hearings, so now we can do the third reading of those ordinance. Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero seven.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on two thousand eighteen dash zero seven? That was the intergovernmental agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero nine is the Borg Warner memorandum of understanding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Two thousand eighteen dash ten, and ordinance, that's the three hundred and sixty-five thousand for the courthouse air conditioner.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Two thousand eighteen dash eleven is the J-Tech special source revenue credits.
Motion to approve.
And fee and lieu of tax. Any discussion on that?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to thank J-Tech for their continued commitment to Oconee County and their investment, you know, continuing, moving forward, so.
Where are they located again?
Torrington Road in Wahala.
Say that again?
It's the old Torrington, it's the Torrington over on, on Wahala. Fantastic plant.
Any other comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, second reading. An ordinance to ve- to develop a jointly owned and operated multi-county industrial and business park with Pickens County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No first reading of ordinances? First and final reading of a resolution authorizing and affirming the establishment of the Seneca Rail Park?
I moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, action items. Approval of Foothills Farmstead Development Plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and consideration of a request by Fair Oak Youth Center that council provide a letter in support of their pursuit of recreation boundaries around, and it should be Fair Oak Elementary, not Fair Play Elementary School.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, real quick in that. As we move forward with Farak Youth Center continuing to work with the city recreations, I would really like to thank Farak Youth Center for what they do in the southern end of the county for all the kids out in that area. And, you know, there is a, a place for Fair Oak at the table in recreation. And I think as they move forward with this, I just want to, you know, my, my agreement with this is more that Fair Oak Youth Center exists in Oconee County to continue to provide recreation. Obviously, as a county, we're not the ones that determine these boundaries. That's, that's done by other organizations that are going through with this. So, a- as long as our attorney doesn't feel like we're superseding those other organizations that are organized, that are the ones that create the boundary, I believe it's SCAP that does the boundaries, you know, my, my commitment is to get them at the table, but I just wanna make sure that we're not superseding another organization that actually does do the boundaries for recreation in Oconee County.
I'd like to make a comment. Do you wanna comment first? Go ahead.
No, mine was more of a question.
Okay, well, actually, I, I was, you know, wondering about the role we should or should not play. So, I did spend hours researching recreation boundary disputes, and I was kind of surprised how much information I ended up having to read, that there's boundary disputes going on all over the country right now. And I was questioning why that was the case, and I, I don't, don't really have a good answer from what I was reading, but I was hypothesizing at the time that perhaps the rules haven't changed with the years, you know? Where everything's based on old rules, and they haven't accounted for urbanization in different areas and that kind of thing. But I was also looking for information as to what extent counties did or did not, and I don't wanna use the word interfere, or did or did not intervene in these disputes. And that was what I found. It was directly proportional to the amount of money they were contributing, or if the county actually owned the property on which the games were playing. So, when counties intervened the most was when they owned the property where the sporting events were occurring, or if they contributed a lot of money to those recreational programs. So, that being the case, we were considering contributing more money than we've had in the past. So, if the information I was researching is somewhat of a precedent, then there shouldn't be a problem with us, you know, supporting their pursuit of recreational boundaries. Mr. Root?
Madam Chair, in, in response to Councilmember Davis's question, we cannot supersede any organizational boundaries as established by the various entities or institutions that I've researched. Certainly, we cannot, but I'm not familiar with each one because it varies by sport. So, my question really was, you know, if council could issue a letter saying we support boundaries, but it's a matter of to whom and how those boundaries are established. For example, Dixie League versus SCAP versus some, versus Schiza for soccer, versus these different entities are gonna have different procedures on how the boundaries have been established. So, one letter may not fit all. And, and so, that's what I'm a little bit confused about. How you go about it? And what, what the full intention is.
Well, you know, yeah, Madam Chair, if, Mr. Swain would like to come up and explain what, I guess, it's y'all's pursuit of boundaries per. Ms. Kamik, if you allow, okay.
I don't want to disagree with Mr. Root, but I have researched SCAP, which is head of our organization here, and they're located in Pickens County. What the director told me was that she decides where the boundaries are, what the boundaries have been given to her. Well, our rec directors are going to give them boundaries. Fair Oak is not included in those boundaries, that's why I'm asking for boundaries for our area. We are a new recreation center coming in, we're not really new, we've been around twenty years, we've just always had to fight this war with our boundaries. I want the county to come in and say, okay, we're going to give you Fair Oak Elementary as a boundary, it's just the attendance line, we're asking for one elementary school, which has approximately six hundred kids. We have rec directors who have two, three elementary schools in their area, twice as many kids. All we're wanting to serve is the kids in our area, so they don't have to travel, that's all we're asking. SCAP, however, SCAP only accepts the boundaries they are provided.
They don't make them.
That's all.
SCAP doesn't make them.
They don't make the boundaries, they accept the boundaries provided by them, who's going to provide them the boundaries? The only people available are the rec directors.
Okay. Mr. Swain, did you want to say something?
You know, one of the biggest concerns that, that the Fair Oak Youth Center has is the ability to continue to exist in the area, and, and I think that's one of the things that we've really been working toward is, you know, the, the requirements and, and, you know, yes, they are not truly, if you, if you view the SCAP, although they do have a SCAP, a South Carolina Athletic, something another, I, I don't know, but they are the ones that truly control who does what, and there is some concern moving forward that boundaries can be enacted on other sports, and that's kind of where we're at, I mean, it's under the understanding with the Dixie boundary lines, those issues exist all over the southeast area that provides Dixie, and, and there's realistically nothing besides a population being greater than thirty thousand that they ever split those boundaries. The biggest thing that, that what we see in here is the ability to exist in other sports moving forward, and it's always been a gentleman's agreement with Fair Oak Youth Center and other recreation to allow them to exist on here, so, you know, the plan is, is to obviously, where we don't have the issue that we have arising up there, and there is also, you know, some requests made by those rec directors, because if you have an association in Oconee County, you'd be one of five recreation groups in Oconee County, Townville is included in ours here, and so that's the big thing that, you know, we look at moving forward is, is to actually, you have a number, but you've never been assigned boundaries, and that's what, you know, the understanding is, and y'all understand that as well, so that, what they're saying is, is if truly, if boundaries were enacted, if they did volleyball, Westminster did volleyball, they couldn't do volleyball, if Westminster's doing soccer, they were doing soccer, they truly couldn't do soccer, so there would be zero boundaries for them to actually even exist in there. From my understanding with the other rec directors, that's not the intent of them to not do that, in, in fact, it was the other way of, of trying to work with them, and they have noted some consistency in the last few years that has helped them work better with them until we obviously had the disagreement with Dixie, but we've, you know, worked through that, it wasn't the, what everybody wanted, but at the same time, as we move forward with other sports, we want to ensure that we don't continue to have this battle on every single sport that's in existence, which is the reason for the boundaries, so that's really what the note is on here, correct?
The director of SCAP, Sherry Anthony, has already told me that if Westminster has volleyball next year, Fair Oak cannot have volleyball, they're going to adhere to the boundaries that they have been presented. So there's our problem.
And y'all, y'all have a meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning.
With the rec directors?
Yes.
And y'all were, okay.
It's easy, we own the land that y'all in, right?
I can't hear you.
We own the land that y'all in, right?
That is correct, we're leasing the land and the buildings.
Well, then the council has the right to approve the boundaries. You said, Ms. Kamik?
Well, that's what I was reading, in the research, yeah, in the research that I read, councils intervene on behalf of those who were disputing in those cases.
I was told by Sherry Anthony over in Pickens, who is over SCAP, that the majority of the recreation in other counties is, they usually go by school district boundary lines. It's much easier to tell, find out a kid, where do you go to elementary school, if you go to Fair Oak, you go to Fair Oak Youth Center, it's just much easier for them. There are exceptions, though, I think Oconee County is an exception because of the cities. Most kids that are in the cities are considered outside the county, are considered county kids, they depend on those kids, and they pay extra to go, you know, to the recreation departments and play, I don't have any problem with that, I don't have any problem with kids going to Townville if they want to go to Townville, but our problem has been this, has been this for years, we've got to, we've got to come along and decide on a boundary for us, so that we can have a seat at the table with these other recreation directors, and the cities, too. Okay.
From my understanding, the boundary line existed due to the high schools, because, I mean, and that's why, that's why Salem had theirs, the existing boundary lines that were out there was for, for that, so we got to be careful about how many elementary schools get boundaries, because there's so many, we have, I mean, we're, we have so many elementary schools now, the biggest thing here is your, your population number on here, there's, there's a lot of unanswered questions on this, which is why, you know, to me, I look at it to state as we move forward, as a council, I don't feel like it's us that needs to get involved in setting recreation boundaries, because, you know, the, you know, Fair, like I've said before, Fair Oak does a great job providing those, all these cities do, at a negative line item to their budget, so, you know, to me, this is something that can be worked out and is continually being worked out between Fair Oak Youth Center and, and the counties, and, I mean, and the cities, and I think that's, to me, is where this needs to stay in, you know, we've done a good job, I don't think it's us to sit here and draw out, I mean, we're not the ones providing the recreation, for us to draw out boundary lines, I mean, I'm, I'm fine to sit down and talk with, with SCAP or have them come present to us, but it's my understanding from the other rec directors, there's no intention of y'all not playing anything, and I, I agree where you're coming from on that, but I don't, I don't want to sit up here and say that we're the ones that need to set the boundaries to them.
If, if they're not set, if they're not set, this is going to continue year after year after year. We have the same situation.
But...
How do other counties deal with this issue? I mean, that's...
School district boundary lines, the attendance lines, in most counties, like in Pickens County, in fact, they had a situation with the same thing, actually, in Dixie, baseball, I believe, I believe it was, they had Pottersville that, that actually had a, well, I guess all of y'all know that area, how it grew, and they, they kept protesting, protesting, and finally, finally, they went by a population, if you go over thirty thousand, then you can have your own Dixie League charter. We're not asking for a Dixie League charter, what we're asking for is just a simple statement saying, Fair Oak Kids, one elementary school, Seneca has three, Wahala has three, Westminster has two, we have one, we're asking for one boundary line for all of our kids, so there'll be no, there'll be no deciding on what, what, what we're going to do, this is it, this is our boundary lines, they won't come over and get our kids, I don't care about, if somebody wants to go to Westminster and play, that's fine, I just want something set so that we can take to SCAP, so that they cannot deny our kids, if we want to have volleyball in the fall, and Westminster wants to have volleyball in the fall, we can both have volleyball together, otherwise, it's going to cut out one or the other, and it's going to cause a big problem here in Oconee County.
May I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
When you, if I understood you correctly, the SCAP expects the, the boundary lines to be presented to them for approval.
Correct.
They're drawn locally and then submitted.
Yes.
Who do they expect to draw those lines?
I don't know, I assume that it's the rec directors that have been there, you know, involved for the last, maybe ten years.
I would assume they're expecting those lines to be determined and drawn out by those parties that are providing the recreation, correct?
Whoever is involved, yeah.
Right, so if we draw lines, I don't believe they would even accept those, because we don't, we're not a party to the recreation program, I think what you're looking for, just to try and clear it up, and, and Mr. Root would like to speak with Ms. Wayne Anne, talk with the SCAP director as well, to get a better understanding, but a letter of support is saying, we hope you get your lines.
And that's what I was going to suggest.
I don't think we're doing anything outside of the ordinary, or anything above and beyond what our authority is, I don't see why the county council can't just say, hey, we appreciate what you do.
We would like you to consider doing this.
We hope that you get your lines.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to suggest, and that's what a letter of support should be.
That's all it is, a letter of support, saying, we recognize your boundary lines.
Well, we can't, we can't recognize them, that's the difference.
We would like you to recognize the boundary lines.
Right.
Or we would appreciate you considering...
We think you should get them, we hope that you get them, we support you getting them, is what we can provide, but we can't provide anything that's definitive that these are your boundaries, because that's, I mean, we're, we're not a party to the organization.
When you talked to the other rec directors about this, what have they said?
We haven't met, I have never been able to talk to them unless it was at that meeting the other day, here.
Right.
We're meeting tomorrow for the first time since February.
Right, and that's, that's one of the big things that, you know, we discussed in there is communication, and you have to be, you know, careful kind of coming, because they, I mean, the cities are the ones that do the recreation, existing and talking about them with this, I mean, to me, that's where you come to the table with them, saying that we need boundaries for everything besides that, that's kind of what, that would be my request, instead of asking us, is talking to them and then coming back to us.
If we put boundary lines in the way they're wanting to put boundary lines in, the way I'm thinking they're going to put boundary lines in, the Townville kids are going to be shut out.
Townville?
Townville's part of, Townville's part of Oconee County Recreation.
Our kids, our kids, right now, are going over and playing in Anderson County.
But I'm just...
And, and that, that was fine, the ones who want to, we don't have any problem with that, but if this, the boundary is put in like they're talking about putting in, that won't be allowed. Sherry at SCAP is saying, we're going to adhere to these boundaries that exist now, which leaves us out.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, just so we have clarity, we meet in one week, it's the odd month, can I talk to Ms. Wayne, talk to the SCAP director, and draft a letter, understand the intent of what she's asking council to do, have y'all a draft letter, so you know what you're looking at, know what you're signing off on, with the information I get from Ms. Wayne and the SCAP director, and then you can tweak that letter however you want on our May first meeting, does that make, is that okay?
That's fine.
All right, I feel more comfortable doing it that way, so y'all have all the information you may need at that point, and have something in front of you, so you know what you're signing off on.
I mean, the communication exists tomorrow to work with this, and by all indications that I've seen, it is to work with the Fair Oak Youth Center and all the sport, is not to block y'all out, and I, what you're talking about, these SCAP boundaries, I understand and, and agree with it, to me, that's where, you know, the open lines of communication come in tomorrow, moving forward, I just...
I, I agree with that, but SCAP's already told me that if, that gentleman agreement that you were talking about is going out next year.
And that's...
She, she said that, and she said, if that happens, then fall volleyball will not be offered at Fair Oak if Westminster has it. We have a problem.
That's something to bring up tomorrow, and then...
When's, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the deadline for providing these, these boundary lines?
I have no idea.
Yes.
You'd have to call Sherry Anthony at Pickens.
Fall sports signs up in a month for soccer.
Some sign up in May.
Yeah, so, that, the, I guess the intent is that, obviously, we're working towards, and they had a few things with Fair Oak Youth Center that y'all have done, done a, done a great job with that, I have not got the indication that y'all are not back to the table on fall sports, and like I said, I know you're meeting tomorrow, that's one of the requests up, I don't, I don't see them not allowing you to play, as long as we're all having open lines of communication, that, that's all, that's all my request is, is to work with them, and, and, you know, from, from our standpoint, you know, we want to support you, and we want to support all recreation for that, but we're, we're still back in the middle of it, where, you know, I think we can get this, I think y'all can get this solved together. I mean...
I don't, I don't think there'd be, hopefully, the rec directors will, I'm just worried about SCAP right now.
Well, but...
Because she made that comment to me personally, that if this, you know, if this gentleman agreement's going out from now on, we're going to adhere to the boundaries that have been presented to me. I don't know who presented them, I guess it's old boundaries.
I think it's the Dixie youth boundaries, from my understanding.
I hope not.
That's...
That means we couldn't play anything.
I think that's what y'all have reported to me, so, that's why I'm just saying, tomorrow, bring that up and talk about that, and have the communication with the rec directors, and, I mean, that's some...
Is there a possibility that this could be worked out tomorrow at that meeting with the rec directors?
I would hope so, yeah.
I will hold off on calling Ms. Anthony until y'all meet, if you could just call me on, that would be Thursday?
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll move it forward from there, and I'll be ready for Tuesday to report back to you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, where are we?
Do we need to table that, or just leave it alone? Okay.
I don't suppose we have someone for building codes appeal board? I haven't seen any applicants recently. Let's take care of our unfinished business, approval of twenty eighteen strategic plan report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One thing, the Utica revitalization plan, or some sort of strategy for revitalization over there, was, I intended for that to be included in the strategic plan discussion when, when we were talking about it, it was inadvertently left off at our strategic planning retreat, and I would ask, I would make a motion to amend, just to include that at the bottom here, so it wouldn't be actually a priority matter, it is a priority for me, but it's, it's something that I really feel like is, is an urgent issue in, in District Three, in my district, and, and it's a huge issue for this county as a whole, there's a, a number of, of crimes being committed, drug-related violence, violent crimes, there's about four times as many drug cases that come out of there, that came out of there last year, as any other community in, in Oconee County, from a, from a area standpoint, and it's a, it's a, to me, it's a crisis, and I think that we really need to do all we can to, to work on revitalizing that area and, and removing the, the environment for crimes to take place.
So moved?
That was a motion.
Second.
Second. Okay. Sorry, it's a speaking motion.
Any discussion on that? I'm trying to remember if, was it in Budget Committee that we mentioned what were the obstacles to putting those dumpsters out there, that the gentleman had asked for?
We actually spoke about that today, June, June ninth, we're arranging, June ninth...
June ninth, yeah.
We are arranging to have the necessary dumpsters for their community cleanup, so Mr. Kamik gave me that information before the meeting tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I met with them on Sunday to try to get, get some things cleaned up over there, so the community's working on organizing that, and we're, we're hopefully going to get it cleaned up until we get our ordinance in place to where we can remove some of these burned-out buildings, that's, that's right now, one of the big holdups, is we, we don't have that ordinance in place.
Yes.
Where are these dumpsters going to be placed?
They'll be in the parking lot of Anho Methodist Church, the trustees have given authorization for us to place them there.
We got ninety-some lot acres over there, that it's possible to stick some over there.
You mean, in the...
It'd be, it'd be a hazard to put them in there.
It's like muddy over there, it's not real.
We got a gate there, we got an asphalt, concrete drive, you can set dumpsters there, all you got to do is cut the lock off, or somebody take the key, swing the door open, and set them in there.
I think the, the goal is actually just to clean up as much as we can on that day, and then... And then somebody come pick those dumpsters up that weekend or early the following week. This wouldn't be a permanent, this is just to see how we can get it done. It's a short-term solution. It's certainly not a long-term solution.
And that church is also on a mission to help that area as well. That's kind of why they volunteered their property to help with that matter. And that helps kind of control what goes on there, too.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to add the Utica revitalization plan to the strategic plan report in a certain spot?
I'm just saying at the end, because we already ranked these.
At the bottom.
At the bottom of here. Because, I mean, I'd like to see it at the top, but I don't know that that's fair to request that. So I was just saying, as long as it's on here so that Mr. Mulder feels like he has some authority given by council to proceed with it.
Okay. So, right now, we're approving the insertion of the Utica revitalization plan. Before we go off on another tangent and forget once again to approve what we intended to approve to begin with. So let's vote on the Utica revitalization plan addition. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, we need to approve the 2018 strategic plan.
You had a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second on that as well. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, no new business. Mr. McCall, your Law Enforcement, Public Safety, Health, and Welfare Committee report?
Yes, ma'am. Met April 10th. Presentation to increase school safety by the sheriff. And he made several points discussed between Oconee County Sheriff's Office, School District, concerning school safety, school shootings, school resource officer at every school, have ten elementary schools, three middle schools, three high schools. Middle schools and high schools are covered one SRO. We have three SROs in the ten elementary schools. They rotate back and forth. We need additional, seven SROs at a bare minimum. Taking additional steps to help stop school shootings other than SRO, possibly arming certain personnel. A minimum of sixty hours advance firearm training, psychological exam, weapons retention, basic first aid in order to carry. After initial training, they'd be required to come back twice a year and re-qualify. Signs will be placed at every school indicating the SRO and armed personnel were on site. The sheriff also updated us committee on regarding coca plant production. Is on the increase, fentanyl, which is very dangerous. Opioid is synthetically produced in China and other means to ship it here. Drug cartels in Mexico have fentanyl factories. Sheriff Crenshaw noted, they anticipated bigger epidemic in the United States. He noticed the need for uniform patrol safety is as important as SROs now. For those of you that don't think this is serious, out there in TV land and in here, you're going to start learning new words. Los Peppis, they are a big drug gang. They took over after Escobar was killed. Escobar and his associate JJ, HKA Hotahota, made a big splash. Los Peppis don't make a big splash. They don't go around marking up buildings. They don't do this. They very quietly behind the scenes until you cross them. You cross them, you're finished. It's a real, something that really facing this county is, you can't stop. It's like an ocean wave going to crash on the beach. In other words, you're going to learn to patrol them. That's the big boss. They start, little small, you're going to learn those words. This coca and the people that travel it, in other words, are called narcos. This is a very serious problem. And they, when they went back, just give you example of how they do it. You get a border patrol or a customs agent. You present this agent with a briefcase with a million dollars in it. He immediately goes blind. Escobar did it. These people are doing it all the time. The amount of money is unconceivable that these people are making. And they really don't give a damn who they poisoned, how bad they trample people's lives. That's immaterial to them. The dollar is the bottom line. And they destroy Oconee County, collateral damage to them. So we need to give the sheriff every tool he needs. We owe it to him. We owe it to the kids. All right, the next thing is update on law enforcement cleanup efforts. It's going real good. They are, you probably, Kevin, y'all probably start reconstruction, right, in the building? So that's going along good. The other thing, presentation by Charlie King of the wildfire, that was really informative. He had a bunch of guys there from U.S. Forestry and State Forestry. They brought about Pinnacle Point, the largest fire in history. And that was, that really drained on the resources. And they did a fantastic job of fighting the fire. Everybody did exactly what they did. They just had, it was such a big fire. Wildfires occur every day across South Carolina in one form or another. Eleven hundred notifications called for Oconee County in 2015. Woodland urban interface areas, growth, community growth, people build houses, they put mulch in, they stuff in the yard that catches fire. And at Myrtle Beach, everybody had all the landscape, and the landscape had caught fire and burnt the houses down. They brought about fire-resistant construction and the different types of wildfires. And in each one of these points, the committee took no effort, no action, and any of these items are all for information only. Our next meeting will be Thursday, May 3rd at 5:00 p.m., which we're going to try our level best to finish up all the unfinished business we've had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we need to recess to executive session for the purpose to discuss and receive legal advice in relation to attorney fee agreement for the opioid litigation. Number two on that list is no longer required, so we will go ahead and remove that.
Motion to amend agenda to remove number two, executive session, Adam?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
To go into executive session to discuss and receive legal advice in relation to attorney fee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? No actions are really needed?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.